Motion to accept the agenda as is.
I'll move the agenda as is.
Get one in favor. That is carried. So, I'll move on to the first item of the business on the agenda, and that's the public meeting here for the land use bylaw. And I'd like to open the public hearing for bylaw 2025-05, land use. And I'd like to ask Liz Armitage to discuss the purpose of the bylaw, please.
The purpose of the bylaw is a comprehensive update to the current land use bylaw. It does have a new number simply because it's easier from a paperwork perspective to give it a new number, but it is based off the current one and trying to bring it up to current standards.
Okay, thank you very much. And first, next item is the confirmation of notice.
The public hearing was advertised in accordance with Thorisby's advertising bylaw number 2018-45. So it was put on the website, the Thorisby Facebook page, and posted on the bulletin board at the municipal office and Arctic Spawes Recreation Complex. All of this was done on August 11th.
All right, thank you for that. And then you have a report. So the report from the development services, please.
The report is in the agenda. I'm going to go over the highlights. The material was already presented at first reading and so I'll just go over the highlights. Essentially, first reading was passed on June 24, 2025, after a workshop was held in Maine with council to go through the changes. From a background perspective, it's the most significant changes were an update to be consistent with the municipal government act, and we also incorporated recently approved land use bylaw amendment changes. We also worked to increase the business friendliness of the bylaw. By one example, as we broke home businesses into two categories, major and minor, we've added more use categories for businesses to provide more options for new businesses and industries to start in town. And we've also worked really hard to increase the user friendliness and ease of use of a very unfriendly document. It's half legallyeased in the way it's written. It's not a particularly great document for the average person to read, but we've tried to add some tables and to do some things to make that easier. As standard practice, when somebody contacts the town, we don't send them the whole document and say, "Sit down and read." We send them what they need based on what they're asking about, so we usually only send them three or four pages to help them, and we talk them through whatever they're working on as well, but...
Exactly. As everybody knows, here is the total. You're not going to send that to everybody. It's quite in-depth.
Just like reading.
Yeah.
Most people don't enjoy it as much as I do. We also looked at increasing housing opportunities, and we recognize that the small town deal is still very important. We're not by any means looking to change that, but just trying to have a greater variety of housing opportunities and living arrangements such as accommodating multi-generational families, allowing for accessory or secondary suites, and considering a greater mix of housing types. And then we've done what I'm just calling in the report as assorted changes. So we've looked at clarifying development approval authorities, subdivision regulations, telecommunication towers, things that are there that aren't necessarily used all that often, but important pieces of the puzzle, and as well making sure that we were in alignment with the Thorisby municipal development plan. So the changes, in my opinion, are in alignment with the municipal development plan. We also conducted a community engagement open house. We had a total of four people attend. One of the main feedbacks that we received was home occupation should be changed to home businesses. Occupation has different connotations to it for some, and we thought, you know what, it is more descriptive to call it home business. So that change was incorporated. And we do want to note that while doing the final review, as I always do before coming into a public hearing and potentially second and third, the parking stall dimension of 2.7 meters in table 10.2 should be 2.6 meters to match existing parking lots. So we've suggested that change. We also noted that direct control district, section 12.4, direct control district 2004-07, clearly my fingers didn't type right, it should have been direct control district 2004-01. There's not 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 6, so being at 7 was very bizarre. And we also noted at the very end and on, I had a good laugh over this one, that part 13 subdivision regulation should be in part 5. So what we would like to do is, we did not make that change because it actually is an extensive amount of renumbering. We would like to have a motion passed to direct us to do that, and once we have that, no content is changing, just the location and the document is changing. You could leave it where it is. It will drive me insane for the rest of time. That's your rights to do, and I won't take it personally. And so ultimately, depending on the outcome of the public hearing, we'd be looking at recommending second reading, making a motion to do the renumbering, and then doing third reading as well.
So are we going to do that after the readings, or is that before we do the second and third, right? That resolution for the changes?
You can do it after second, you can do it before second, wherever, just along with time before third. And so that's my report.
Okay, thank you for that. So at this time, I'd like to call if there were any written submissions.
We did receive three written submissions, one from Alberta Health Services, one from Portis, and one from Talus. No concerns were raised from any of those agencies that chose to respond. Anyone else who didn't respond, our notice lets them know that they're considered no response if they...
All right, thank you for that. Okay, we'll get to the middle of the thing here. So person wishing to heard. So I'm going to ask for the first time, is there anybody who wants to speak to this land use bylaw? Jane?
This is your first part.
Go ahead.
My name is Michelle Palmer, and we were looking to, I'm on the EPA, just to work with high school, along with Lacy Geller, Emily Anderson, and Amanda Minnick, and I think that was one of the fathers. We were wondering to purchase a CCAN for storage for the school. There was one at Ballantyne School, I think with this bylaw, it was not group. It would be for storage for different options for the school, so they can move it out of some of the storage rooms, which then could be moved into some of the learning board resource areas, and just make more room in the school because the school won't be giving anything away down. My parents went to school there. I went to school there. My all two kids, grades 12, 10, and 8, and our kids are our future Thorisby. So I think if we can give them more opportunity, more options, more things to help the teachers, I think this would be an advantage to our community. I have a school friend who's now in the community, and Emily went to school here for three kids. Amanda Minnick, all her kids have done all through their schooling here, and I think they went to school for Thorisby. So I think if we can keep our kids happy and the parents and community happy with the school, it's going to be good for Thorisby, and...
Okay, well, thank you for that. We're certainly aware of that. I know Donna, do you want to speak to that first, please?
Your worship, I'll turn it over to Miss Armitage, but the old land use bylaw didn't allow for that.
Correct.
But I'll let Miss Armitage speak to any changes we have made with this new land use bylaw.
Thank you for that, please.
We definitely understood the request from the school. So there is a section in the bylaw 8.25 that talks about temporary structures in portable storage containers. So there are locational criteria such as behind the building, out of sight essentially for them, and they have to, you know, be well taken care of and those type of things. And then my computer is not being a happy computer at the moment, but we did add it to multiple districts. Typically is a discretionary use, which means you have to apply for a permit, and then circulate to neighbors with your site plan showing where it will be. So neighbors have the chance to appeal if it's approved. And so I would like to confirm with certainty that it's in that district, but I remember doing it, so I'll just look through and... Whatever their land use is. Jesse, can you open the public service?
So if I'm hearing correct, we've addressed this?
We addressed it, and they'll need to apply for an application for it.
Going forward for you guys to put it in there.
But it has to be behind. I believe so. Yes, public service does now have it listed as a discretionary use as a portable storage container. So they just have to meet the locational criteria of the land use bylaw on the site and apply for an application, and once we grasp that assuming we do, then neighbors get notified and they have the right to the appeal.
Very good. So then all you guys have to really do is come in and see Donna.
So Blackpool, so our principal would have to come in and apply for that, then, is that right?
Yes, and I've talked with the council for years.
It should be a very simple process.
As soon as council passes the...
I know you have.
So that's why we're out here. It will be appreciated. Thank you. So as soon as third reading is passed, if council does that tonight, come in tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, just to make sure we clarify, one of the things, listen, I've done a lot of these land use bylaws, and one of the things we look at is we keep notes on there to see what's wrong and what's right. Some things we decided to change, and other things we say what's good for the community, and as you can see, the elevator shows you this slide up here. One of the things we did recognize for the school is that you need a little more storage space. We recognized that when we were asking for it before. But we couldn't variance your request, nor could you probably contest it because it wasn't in here for us to duplicate, right? So, listen, I had lots of talks, and we wanted to make sure that it's in a great place and that you can use it for what you need to. So, yeah, we heard you. We just didn't tell you until tonight.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask, is there any other, any other people mean to be wished? Gavin, go ahead. Just tell us your name and...
Gavin Reynolds. So just to clarify regarding this, I can understand what the school's looking for. When I first came to Cal, I was told most of CAT containers. So now is the bylaw being changed for residential as well as commercial, or just for commercial?
For a couple districts, so I can go through which ones are being changed. The first one that it has that now is a discretionary is the C1 district, which is central commercial. The next one is highway commercial, or C2. Then it's also in, again, but these are all discretionary, industrial, and then the public service is one as well. And one more. The council direction when we went through this one was to still not allow them in residential.
And so...
Urban holding is how their grandfather agreed. If they have a permit, their grandfather. If they never got a permit, they are not. And so essentially, in residential, they're still not allowed.
Right. Anything else, Gavin?
No, that's, I just want a clarification.
Okay, thank you. Irene?
Yes, we just going back here for a while. There is a property with a CCAN in their backyard, and at one point, it was discussed that it was residential property, but the CCAN was used as commercial. Now, I understood it to be that the owners were approached, and that property had to be classified as commercial, so they were paying commercial taxes, not residential taxes. Does that still apply?
I'm not familiar with the property.
Your worship, through to Irene, is that, is that property just off of Pankin Street here? Is that what you're referring to, or are you referring to a residential property?
A residential property.
I believe it was just across from the fire hall there, just north of the fire hall there, and they had it in their back alley, if I recall correctly, Irene.
It was in the backyard.
Correct.
It was across the road from...
Yes, and they were, they were told to remove it, right?
It's still there.
Is it still there now?
No, that's the one across from the...
That, that is, that was grandfathered in by the previous council through legal means if it's across from the restaurant?
Yeah, behind TFR.
Yeah, that was, that was grandfathered in legally. We had nothing to do with it as administration. That stays there, and that's a C1 property, I believe. We're working right now, the property that we're working with now in the residential area is under removal order to get their CCAN out, and we're probably looking at a King's Bench removal order, which means we have to go to court. We'll remove that one. But when we try to look at the CCAN in question that you're referring to, Irene, there's documentation that the town has grandfathered that in legally, so there's not much I can do about it. But it's a great question. Thank you.
Anybody else speak? Okay, I will, I'll ask for a second time. Are there any persons wishing to be heard? And I'll ask a third time. Are there any persons wishing to be heard? And if not, I will close public hearing bylaw 2025-05. And yeah, that's it. Thank you all very much. Now I'll ask the council to make a resolution for changing the pages as Liz stipulated there before we do the passing of the bylaws.
I can make that motion.
Thank you. One in favor? Go ahead.
I'm not going. That would be... The conversation with CCAN made me realize and think about the fact that while we did all these changes in the CCAN area, we did not add a clause about temporarily placing them in residential for moving purposes. And so I pulled up another bylaw from another municipality that I'm working on, and I would recommend council consider an additional motion to add in a clause. CCAN may be temporarily placed on a site in any district, A, during active construction on a site when the shipping container is solely for the storage and supplies and equipment that are used for the site, provided they have a valid building permit, has been issued for the construction. The shipping container or portable storage container must be removed from the site upon completion or construction. Or B, for the purposes of loading or unloading that item associated with the principal use for a period of not more than 16 days in any six-month period. So that basically allows somebody to use a shipping container to move their belongings into their new home. And then another clause that would say, when placed on a temporarily, when placed on a site temporarily pursuant to this section, the CCAN shall be located as to not create a safety hazard, not be located within 1.2 meters of the property boundary, and be located at the rear of the yard or park.
Good.
I, I think now's a great time to capture that, and I think it's an important piece, especially in that residential, where we don't allow them, but they are a common practice for how people move.
I would move that addition that Liz suggested, the addition of the CCAN usage.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just voting on that.
I thought you were doing the bylaw passing. That's under section nine. We'll come back to that. So thank you for that. All right.
That's very...
Got it? Okay, so next item of business, the adoption of previous minutes, the public hearing minutes from July the 29th, the regular meeting from July 29th, and then the special meeting for August the 19th. Are there any error or omissions that anybody wants to bring forward?
I reviewed the minutes, and I didn't find any errors or omissions, so I would move them as stated.
Thank you. One in favor? Carry it. All right, 6.1, Thorisby, Breton, RCMP, DeBappins. For the grid, we have the...
As your former staff members, you may join the council, too, to give us special information.
I'm not sure if you have my presentation there. You...
Nope.
Oh, I... Oh, no, that's fine. I've got it here. Yeah, you guys, there's somebody else can see it then.
I know, I'm sorry. I forgot to... You sent it to your right, so...
There you go.
I can give you a hard copy if you want. Sure.
I don't think we have it in the...
Oh, you don't think you have it? I think I have something here.
We got it.
Got it?
We got it.
All right, I think I've met everybody in council, but for those who don't know me, I'm Staff Sergeant Angela Gilchrist. I've been the detachment commander here for Thorisby and Breton detachment since December. I'm here on assignment currently from Wataasquen, our CNP detachment. So I'm just going to go through a little bit of the stats. I'm not going to bore you too much with what the crime stats are looking like, and then I'll just kind of give you a bit of an overview as to everything. I can report that right now, staffing-wise, we are full. We have no vacancies, and everybody's healthy and at work, so that's been fantastic for us. We do have two new recruits that joined us here within the last couple of months, right out of training at Depot, so they are paired up with their field coaches currently, and so far, so good. They're doing very well. So I'll go through the Thorisby stats first, because obviously that's of interest to you folks, and then I'll just quickly go through what Breton's looking like as well. We are an amalgamated detachment. For those who don't know that, we've been amalgamated since 2010, so two separate buildings normally, but we operate kind of under the same premise and as a unit so far. So Thorisby's looking quite good as far as our crime stats have gone. We've really concentrated on property crime, and it's starting to really pay off. We've had a 14% decrease year over year in our property crimes, and our total criminal code has gone down 1.6%. We've had quite a few, 19 fewer break and enters year over year. We've had six fewer theft of motor vehicles. And as I explained the last time I was here, we've seen a bit of an anomaly with our persons' crimes. Our persons' crimes continue to increase. We're up 27% from last year, and we have no rhyme or reason for it. It's not something that we can, there's really nothing that we can do to compensate for that. We respond, but proactively speaking, it's very hard to predict who's going to assault who, or who's going to rob who, or when that's going to happen. And so we've seen quite an uptick here in the last year with regards to persons' crime, and it's not just for the Thorisby area. It's overall in our province, whether that's economical, political frustrations, we're not really sure, but we're definitely, we're definitely seeing. So we've had 13 more persons' crime offenses this year so far than we did last year, and that's continuing to rise. But if you turn to the next slide here that has my arrows, there we go, so that kind of gives you an overview of what we're looking at. So overall, our criminal code is down 2% for Thorisby area, property crime down 14%, break and enter specifically down 58%, which is fantastic, 19 fewer than last year. But there you see the property crime increase of 27%, and like I said, there's many different factors that could be contributing to that, but for us, it's a response. It's not a proactive type of thing. So I'll get you to go to the next slide there for me. So that gives you a bit more of an overview. Just to put it into perspective with the persons' crimes, we've had five more sexual assaults this year than last year so far. We've had 27 assaults as opposed to the same time last year, we were at 22. We've had uttering threats. We're at 16 so far this year, whereas all of 2024, we were at 13. So that just gives you a little bit of a perspective as to what our persons' crime is looking like. And then, of course, our frauds. Our frauds are up again. We're at 31 right now, and we were at 14 total for all of last year. So we've tried, you know, doing social media, and this is, again, not just our area specific, but this is probably provincially wide, Canada-wide, where a lot of our senior citizens are being targeted in a lot of these phone scams, stuff like that, and it's very unfortunate. We're trying to get the message across that if this is not somebody that you know, it's not a number that you know, don't engage with that person. We're seeing a lot of people falling victim lately to some of these scams. And there's, again, we can, we can do as much education as we can, but at the end of the day, people, unfortunately, they're still falling victim. So I'll get you to go to the next slide there for me. So this is just a quick overview of our file count so far this year for Thorisby. We're at 1,061 calls so far in 2025. Month-wise, you can see our busiest month so far was July, but we don't quite have all of the numbers yet for August. So usually in the summer, that's when we seem to get a lot of our busiest calls. And then just on the side there, it's just the file count breakdown as it's done. So in Ladue County, where this falls into here, we had 593 calls so far this year, and then second to that is right in Thorisby, which is 184 calls. And then Warburg, 132. The county of Wataasquen is at 127, and then the little pink area there is usually us assisting other detachments. Next slide, please. And then I'll go to Breton. Breton's down right now in everything. Green is good. We've had 11% decrease overall in our persons' crimes, so we've been able to turn that around out in the Breton area. They were really up the last time I spoke with you guys as well. For whatever reason, things have kind of calmed down out there. So now hopefully that trend continues for Thorisby. Property crime down 12%, and overall criminal code, happy to report, we're at down 10.5% decrease. So, I mean, those numbers are phenomenal. The guys have been working really hard, and I'll give you some numbers here in a minute as to what that entails. But break and enters, four or few break and enters out there. We had one fewer theft of motor vehicle so far, eight fewer persons' crimes, 37 fewer property crimes overall, and 44 fewer total criminal code offenses from last year. So that's, that's really good numbers for us. I'll go to the next slide. There you can see it. We had one, one more instance of theft under from last year, and other criminal code went up 2%, and again, that's equated to the frauds. But everything else is looking very good out there so far. And again, just to break down, we're seeing, we're seeing our sexual assault ticking up. Again, last year in 2024, we only had one reported. This year so far, we're already at five, so concerning, but it's also has to do with more people are coming forward and reporting as well. And I think, you know, social media, and it's just, they feel more comfortable, I think, reporting, and so we see more historical assaults being reported to us than in past years, so that could contribute a little bit to that as well. Next slide here. So for Breton, the members so far have responded to 1,161 calls. And again, the breakdown, our busiest month for them was May, and then things kind of slowed down a little bit in the summer here, which is interesting. And then the breakdown, so Wataasquen County responded to the, or sorry, Brazil County had the most calls so far with 502, and then followed by Wataasquen County at 409, and then you can see Breton had 147. So I just threw on here a few files of interest that we've been working on, just to give you a little bit of an overview as to what's happening in the area. So our CNP members responded to Ladue County and found a child on the roadway approximately three years old. The members were able to successfully reunite that child with her guardian. Thorisby RCMP responded to report in Ladue County of a male being attacked by a bull. Star's ambulance attendant transported the male to U of A for further care, and we were successfully able to rodeo the bull back home. Thorisby RCMP responded to a double fatal motor vehicle collision. That collision is still under investigation. It's ongoing. Criminal charges are pending. Thorisby RCMP responded to a rural property after stolen property was located by the owner. We were able to recover stolen trailers, skid steers, Ford F-350, and various other high-value items. A loaded 9mm handgun was located during the arrest of Riley Garrett, who was subsequently charged with numerous criminal code offenses, and I believe he's still in custody. charged with numerous criminal code offenses, and I believe he's still in custody at this point. Breton RCMP responded to a single vehicle rollover. Both the driver and the front passenger of the vehicle were ejected. The front passenger sustained life-threatening injuries and was transported by Star's to hospital. Criminal investigation is ongoing on that one as well. And Breton RCMP is currently investigating a report of human trafficking. So that just gives you a little bit of an overview as to what our guys and girls have been busy with over the last little bit. And the next slide here, so every year we do what's called an annual performance plan. We come up with some priorities and what we want to kind of focus on. And so this year, priority number one was crime reduction, specifically targeting our prolific offenders and prolific offender management. So that kind of entails anybody who's out on release on conditions, for example, curfew, stuff like that. So so far in the first quarter, the members conducted 170 curfew and conditions checks. And we also do what's called hotspot checks, and we use a crime mapping tool for that. So basically, we're able to pinpoint on a map where the majority of our crime is happening, if that's the case, if there's a specific location that we're getting a lot of calls to or whatnot. And so we'll deploy members there and provide that high visibility. So they're doing these checks above and beyond just their normal patrols and being out there. So so far in the first quarter, they completed 949 hotspot checks. And I can say without a doubt that that's why you're seeing our crime numbers going down substantially. It's just them out there being visible and, you know, it's really tough. We've got so many locations, so many lease sites, especially out in the rural areas, you know, it's kind of a crap shoot as to where they're going to strike next. But if we can just continue to show that visibility presence there, it certainly acts as a deterrent a lot of times for people out there stealing. Our second priority, crime reduction, again, reducing the property theft specifically. So we've been working with the auto theft units and their bait program. And for those of you not familiar with that, we have certain bait assets that we deploy to, again, we use crime mapping to determine, or to try to determine where they might strike next. So we're placing these bait assets in different locations, and if they get taken, we're able to GPS track those items and then facilitate an arrest and lay charges of possession of stolen property as a result. So we have had some success with that. We do have bait assets deployed as we speak. And again, word sure gets around when one person gets charged because they've stolen something that belonged to the police with a GPS tracker in it. So again, those types of tactics seem to be working up here. And then our third priority is enhancing road safety. We've had a lot of fatal motor vehicle collisions or near misses. We've got a few real bad stretches of highway in our area. So we're working really hard, again, that visibility piece, but members are out there constantly assessing for impaired driving, distracted driving, stuff like that. So so far in the first quarter, they did 29 check stops. 113 vehicles were checked for impaired driving during those check stops. Nine actual impaired driving fails resulted, and we also had 381 violator contacts, which are basically tickets for whether it's speeding or something along those lines. One target radar laser operation was completed, and we also, prior to the end of the school year, we did three school presentations to the graduating classes that we look after on the dangers of distracted driving. So the members are out there, and they're trying to educate our new drivers and up-and-comers. And so I would think that goes a long way to hopefully stop some of these unfortunate fatalities that we're seeing. That's pretty much it for me, but I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So I'll open up any questions here instead of waiting to the end, because I don't want to bore you, I mean, you stay here right to the end and ask questions. So first, go ahead.
I've noticed in the last two or three months that there's a lot of people, they're all staring at expressing two-lane highways. I'd like to cross over the line, here's the crossway, and some of them get pretty close. My question is, is that the new suicide rate? That's my theory, but I don't know.
I mean, we have seen that on occasion. I wouldn't suggest that it's happening regularly. Honestly, I think a lot of that could just be equated to distracted driving. Either people are on their cell phones and they are drifting over the line, or, you know, they're tuning their radio, or they're not paying attention, or maybe they're yelling at the kid in the backseat, and the next thing you know, they've crossed the line and unfortunately head-on collisions result.
I do, I welcome driving on Sundays, and one Sunday between Seaver Beach and Thorbsby, and I don't go too high. I think there were four, it's been, for so, all one or 39 minutes ago.
Yeah.
It's just something else by the road.
And that's why when I say we have some bad stretches of highway, we don't have a lot of twin highways in this area. It's a lot of single-lane highways, right? And so when people aren't paying attention, or if people are drunk, or they're just sleep apac drivers, that's where we're getting the majority of our fatal collisions, is the head-on collision from exactly what you're telling me. So everybody's got to be really careful when they're, when they're out on the road, and unfortunately, everybody's kind of got to drive defensively.
What do you do? Like, if they get nervous, do you hit the ditch and risk killing yourself, or unless they're too young, what do you do?
I certainly wouldn't go head-on if you can all help it, right? So you're going to have to drive a little defensively. If that were to happen, I would suggest you take the ditch versus taking head-on collisions. No, and like I said, we're, we're trying to get out there and be as visible as we can, but.
Well, you can't be everywhere all the time.
No, we can't. And that's why, you know, we're, we're trying to educate with the younger generation now in hopes that maybe they understand that, you know, living life out there is valuable when you're driving a vehicle that can kill someone.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can I ask, you probably can't tell me this, but that double fatality, is it normal for it takes a long to charge someone in that?
Yeah, yeah. Usually when an investigation like that, especially if there's potentially impaired driving resulting in the deaths of individuals, there's a lot that goes into that. We have to write search warrants, we have blood to analyze, potentially, we have, we wait for traffic analyst reports, collision reports. So that investigation could take six months to a year, depending on when we can get our lab results back, and a whole different slew of things. Not to mention the fact that we want to do it right for the families involved, right? When you lose a loved one as a result of somebody else's actions, you expect the police and you expect the court system to have everything wrapped up in a nice, neat little package where there's not going to be any room for error, right? And so we take our time, it's very meticulous, we use our expert analysts to go through all of that stuff, and then we put it to Crown. And sometimes Crown can take a little bit of time to decide what charges they want as well. But again, they, they're kind of our second eyes on everything. They may say, you know what, we need another statement from this person, or we need this, or we need that. And so, yes, to answer your question, it takes time, but it's because we want to do it right the first time.
And then when he gets charged, will it be public knowledge?
Correct. So anytime anybody's charged, it doesn't matter what it results in. If an information has been laid in the court system, which is a formal way of charging somebody, then it becomes public knowledge unless it's a youth, then you may not have the name of the person. But it is common record at that point.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ken?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I brought this up to council a few times about the RCMP presence in town. So you closed down one detachment.
No, sir, we haven't closed it. It's, the building is being set straight now for, yeah.
But you have more of a police presence in your building here.
Yes, we're, we're working out of the office space here, yeah.
My question is, a lot of people in town are concerned that there's not more visibility now with the two departments or detachments, whatever, coming together. Like, you would think that there would be more visibility indoors. So that's some concern that's been brought to me, and I've addressed it at council and say, well, we're sort of on a tier. We pay X number of dollars at the community or whatever in our tax space, we pay so much. I understand the areas that you guys are covering, and I understand the seriousness of the calls, but is there some way that we can get a little bit more visibility?
I didn't bring the numbers with me, but the members log every single shift where they make patrols. Every single community that they go to, they will document whether or not they were able to make patrol in that community on any given shift. And I can honestly say that the numbers in Thorbsby, even though you may not see us, we are here and we are visible. And our crime stats right now are showing that, just based on the decrease that we're seeing, especially related to the property crime offenses right now. I guess, I think for Thorbsby, I think our break and enters were down by like 19 or something like that. So even though you may not see us, it may be 2:00 in the morning, but we're, we're out there and we're driving around.
No, but when I'm basically, to boil it down, I find it a little bit more, I live up at the school, okay? So, and I find that there's more traffic, and I understand the highway, we can't do nothing about it, this and that, there's speed limits and forbidden, you know, all of that. But can we have more of a presence, especially when the Thorbsby stockyards are in town?
Okay.
They're running? It's just, it's a real bugger coming down that highway.
Sure.
Like, I sit on my deck and I watch these semi trucks, they're going the limits, 50 and stuff like that.
Yeah.
But right at that four-way, not four-way intersection, but that four-way that's sitting there by the school.
And I have no problem if, if we're alerted to a specific event, for example, the stockyard one that you speak of, if you let us know that, and we have available members that aren't at a priority call or aren't, are dealing with something at the time, if we know that it's happening, we will certainly send members out there and a presence.
Like, I know our bylaw officer, our previous one, he spent a lot of time out there.
Yeah.
And that was for the school, on the, the school in Macabre. That's even slowed down quite a bit. But he's only there for that basically half an hour, 45 minutes.
Right.
I get that, I understand that, but it's more, it's more of a, I don't want to call it speeding, but I've watched kids go across here, about everybody is taught to push that button, so the lights go and you get semi trucks, and you hear the retard brakes come on, like a man that's just like, oh shit, right? So.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly let the guys know that, you know, in their patrols, they can, they can look into that. When we're using this crime mapping, right, unless people are calling in complaints to a certain area, we may not know that there's a problem there, right? And so this might be a prime example of that, where if we're not getting calls there or concerns being brought to our attention, we don't know what's happening, right? So, you know, I guess I can say that for everybody, that if, if there is a concern and it's something that's occurring often, then let us know, and then we can certainly deploy resources to that if we know that it's happening. If we don't know what's happening, we're, we're patrolling, you know, where we're going.
I realize, you see, the school season's starting and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I say, I brought it to council, and we talked about it, but.
Unfortunately, you hit the nail on the head. We have over 2,800 square kilometers worth that we are patrolling, and it just going to depend day to day what we're, what we're busy with. If there's nobody on calls and we can free somebody up to go and assist by law, or do a bit of a traffic blitz out there or whatnot, we'll certainly do that. But again, we, we would like the input from, from the community if, if they're noticing an actual problem in a specific location to let us know.
Thanks, Sarah. Rod, did she have something?
She answered my question.
Okay, perfect. Nice.
Who's in charge of the stigma? Is that the town?
It's usually the highways.
Okay. 50th Avenue, east of Wildwood, Tampa. They just, they don't go 15, they go.
Yeah, well, and it's unfortunate because you've got basically the main highway coming right through Thorbsby, right? So you might have to talk to Donna about how that works with.
The Highway 778, I've talked about 50, that's attached to the stockyards, to the gravel. But between Wildwood, Tampa, and the gravel, they just go, they're like crazy. And this little kid's with one.
Right. You might have to talk to your municipality or your town. We, we don't have any control.
I'll go to the council with it.
Okay.
It's somewhere.
We are, I believe our, our peace officers, being trained right now, the council should be here very soon, I believe.
Your worship, our new peace officer is here. I believe he goes to deployment filing on Monday, I think, just waiting for his uniform. And that's why we didn't fill in the polls that were hoping to slow him down, but obviously that's not working right. It is, it is tough there for sure.
It's not only the, the stockyards, it's when the farmers are coming in off that gravel into town. I swear, some of them are good 80 miles an hour. And not for.
We have, Doc Gilchrist that I've talked about, some joint operations once John gets here and is in full gear. We know we have some trouble spots, and we'll do some pinpointing as a team between our peace officers and our CMP. I could tell you that I'm currently gathering all the trucking companies that come through here. Their dispatchers and their health and safety managers will get a, an email, I've done this before, a letter, indicating that you have 15 or 18 days to tell all your drivers that they're coming to Thorbsby to do the speed limit, and to take special care of the school. By the 20th of September, we will have no tolerance.
I just think it's a little tricky.
No, I understand. Yeah, you bet.
Well, thank you. Anybody else? I appreciate it very much. That's very enlightening, and I certainly filled your pain with some of these problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sarah.
So just, just for the school people, if you guys want to escape, you're more than welcome to leave right now, or you're also more than welcome to stay till the end if you like.
Make sure we pass the bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Good lobby.
All right, motion to accept the RCMP report for information, please.
I can make that motion.
All in favor? That is carried. All right, moving on to the next item, 7.1, reserve bids, the tax sale, CFP Cindy, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can. So under the Municipal Government Act, the Asset Council, well, I don't have to tell you, the council must establish a reserve selling price as close as reasonably possible to the market value for each parcel being offered. Section 419 of the Municipal Government Act stipulates the council must set a reserve bid that is as close as reasonably possible to the value of each parcel, any conditions that apply to the sale. Free properties are scheduled for public tax sale auction, scheduled for September 26, 2025, and must have the reserve bid established. Administration has provided council with the recommended reserve bid in the attached document. So we recommend that council through resolution establish the reserve bid as presented for the properties being offered for sale at the 2025 public auction.
Who sets the market value? Is it going on?
No, we've just, she suggested we just use the asset value from the assessor, so that's what we've done.
And, yeah, and that information is available here for anybody who wants it, right?
The asset value, yeah.
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 Okay, there it is there. Okay, any other questions? No? Got a motion to establish reserve bids as presented for the properties and 20, 25 public auction as stated there?
I will make that motion.
All in favor? That is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, 8.1 Rotary Club of Nisku, Laduke Ukrainian fundraiser. Donna, you know about this one?
I do, your worship. Thank you, the council. The Rotary Club of Nisku Laduke approached the town of Thorbsby regarding a quest for a charitable sponsorship of $500 for their event. Their club is hosting an Ukrainian music and dance event that will fundraise towards language training for the Ukrainian immigrants in Alberta. Currently, our remaining budget for the community event funding is $250, and our policy does state that the committee grants policy is for Thorbsby community incentives, defined as a response by individuals, groups, or organizations to support, enhance, or provide improved quality of life or safety for Thorbsby residents. or promotion to the Thorisby community as a whole, which can be expected to have a high level of community acceptance. So administration, we're requesting you consider the request for the sponsorship. Administration is not recommending that the community grant be used as this is a Thorisby initiative. The Rotary Club of Nisku does have the right to ask for sponsorship funding and we would require a letter of acceptance or regrets on this. So administration is recommending that it's not changed our current community grant policy.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, where does it end there? I mean, we're not here to give everybody money. Taxpayers, I'm sure they understand that, so.
I would move that we send regrets. I think we still have Halloween coming and Christmas coming and if we only have two hundred and fifty dollars left to send out, we're tapped.
Thank you, all in favor? That's carried.
We'll send a monthly letter of regret.
Thank you very much. All right, so back to the bylaws, nine point one, the land use bylaw twenty twenty-five oh five, second and third readings. I don't think there's any more discussion here. We did the resolution for the pages already. So again, a motion for the second reading of land use bylaw twenty twenty-five oh five, please.
I can make that motion.
All in favor? Carry it. And can I get a motion for the third and final reading of land use bylaw twenty twenty-five oh five?
I will make that motion.
All in favor? That's carried. All right, nine point two, the community standards bylaw twenty twenty-five oh seven, first reading. See, Donna, you want to see this one here quickly?
Yeah, I could just briefly, sorry, your worship, yeah, I can briefly discuss this. This is the first look at it for council. And the community standards bylaw does require some updating for sure. We certainly reworked the entirety of the bylaw conjunction of the systems from Calmar Social Services to ensure that it's in line with community standards enforcement standards. Now, many sections, we clarified, simplified, and made more than adjustable for residents to understand and follow. So instead of bylaw ease, it's more clean language. The definitions have been expanded in accordance with previous bylaw councils' path. So fines for offenses have been expanded from the previous bylaw, including more specified penalties along with the relevant sections, there's more sections that we can fine for. At this point, your worship, we are seeking feedback and comment from council to ensure that the proposed community standards bylaw needs to meet with the town authorities. So we recommend, your worship, council, that the community standards bylaw twenty twenty-five be provided first reading with feedback provided to us before the next council meeting in September so we can look at second and third reading at your discretion.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions or other comments? If not, can we have the motion for the first reading of the community standards bylaw twenty twenty-five oh seven?
I can make that motion.
All in favor? Done. All right, so bylaws are all done. Okay, moving on here to the one point one, variance report.
Hi.
Hello, Cindy.
So the variance report for, yeah. So after seven months of the year, seven, right? We're at seventy-seven percent of revenue as compared to seventy-one percent last year. And expenses are still at fifty percent, as compared to fifty, almost fifty-two percent last year. So we're still doing good, we're still holding the line. Nothing crazy's happened, not that much. I want to make right, please.
People would probably like that today. Okay. Does anybody have any question on the variance report? No? Motion to accept the July variance report for information?
I'll move to accept the July variance report.
All in favor? Carry it. All right, so move on to the correspondence. We have a letter from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, Dan Williams, regarding the twenty twenty-five fire service training program grant. See, Donna, have we ever got anything on this? Ever asked for anything else? Well, that's really for the Le Duke County, I guess.
Yeah, your worship, that's provocative for training. What I would like to suggest that, yes, it'd be accepted information, but I would like to get council feedback and perhaps writing a letter to Le Duke County sending our support for this grant funding and if we take advantage of it to train as many of their folks as they can under this grant, including, they've got quite a few rookies now with Le Duke Fire, Le Duke County Fire. So I'm just recommending a support letter.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on that? All right, and again, a motion to direct administration to send a letter to the county regarding this?
I can make the motion for our administration to do that.
All in favor? That's carried. Wow, I thought we'd be here kind of all night, so.
We're not done.
We're not done. So we're all done the agenda, so public comments, I see a lot of people here, so I'm sure something's going on. Who wants to, who wants to talk? Go ahead, Barry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, administration. I brought my little Kupira, Communities in Bloom passionate members here. And so a couple of things, just wanted to kind of give you a quick update as, you know, how we're doing. So we've been pretty active in the community. We've been doing some fundraising, as you've probably heard of. We did the RX Buzz, three anniversary fundraiser in conjunction with the Chamber to raise some money for bleachers, so whenever that goes into play or however it gets sorted out, we had a successful barbecue here this weekend with our truck show and that was well received by everybody. As you know, we've been doing, you know, a few workshops along the way. One being with Rec Center, a perennial exchange here this summer that was a first for us and well received. And we did a seed exchange with the library and that was really well received. And working with the local greenhouse. And so we've been in the community, out and about doing things that people appreciate and I think people, you know, appreciate it back great, so. So without going, without being said, one of the things that we just wanted to kind of bring to your attention, just ask for some clarity, was I just recently noticed that the trail system at the Lovers Lane Trail System is, or has been dismantled. Now, I don't know when it's been dismantled, I think recently, I'm going to say, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Last week.
Yeah, last week. So I was just wondering, was that a motion of council to dismantle? Was there an issue with it being in place? Why is it getting dismantled? The only reason I bring this forward is because Communities in Bloom did have, that was a project for Communities in Bloom back, I presume, when it was started, six years ago? And so at the time, what I recall, without looking for documentation, I believe it was we, we were given approval by council by motion to allow use of the alley easement as long as nothing permanent was put in there. And we thought that was a fair request. So all we had done is we had brushed the trail out and allowed a couple benches and picnic tables to be put in, some garbage cans to be put in. And I thought it probably served that area of the community really well because it was a flat.
So is that, is that on the, is that on the rough side or is that on the Uchik side?
The other side.
Yeah.
By Zajin.
Zajin, correct, yes.
So from Zajin.
It's a walk-in, you roughly?
Yeah.
So I just wasn't sure if there was an issue that had went forward or, you know, what was the reasoning for it to be closed? Because we did not receive any kind of notification that it was being closed. We didn't even know that it was on the radar to be closed. So just looking for some understanding and some, I get some clarification as to what happened.
All right, thank you. See, Donna, you, I know we've been talking, that, we've been talking with people that purchase that land. So do you want to, we, do you want to talk about it or do you want to bring it back at a different time?
No, I can help you out with that. We had, it certainly wasn't done with any kind of malcontents or any kind of malfeasance buried. We had numerous complaints from the landowners on the corner, that people were using it parking in their yards, disturbing their dogs, teasing their dogs, so numerous complaints about that. And they're, they're, believe me or not, I have to take the complaints, right? Not only that, with part of our snow in there in the winter and it is overbrushed and there was, there's a privacy concern. So what we did is we talked about it as a team and we thought, okay, let's pull everything out of there, let's pull a picnic table out there to which the coffee bean place is very happy to have. And we can certainly have a platform there if that's a donation for the Communities in Bloom. We don't have a problem with that.
The Lions, those, the Lions donated two tables to that area for a rest point, right? So not.
So they're going to rebuild it. And then the garbage can came out that you raised money for, but it's going to sit on the corner up from the coffee bean. It'll sit right there because there isn't one there. And we just, we just kind of closed that section because people were using it really not to do anything there. The CPO there for a while was patrolling it, people were not using it to where it was supposed to be used because it's too much brush and so forth. We just, we cleared it out and it's no longer a trail to be used anymore. There was issues with some nefarious stuff going on down there. I won't say parking in a car, we've all done that, but there was other things going on there. So it wasn't done with any malice, it was more a public safety issue. Communities in Bloom wants to build another section of the trail to administration and bring it to council. Certainly we have to do that in exchange for closing that one.
Go ahead, you have a question?
I'm new to the community. Unfortunately, you guys have gotten way too many bylaws for a small community. But you have no walkability factor in this town. None, there's no, like if I were to walk from my place all the way to Main Street, there isn't even a bench. And as your community ages, it makes sense to make it more accessible and having benches and entertaining that because we need to walk, but we also need to have benches to sit down.
Right. Well, I guess, I guess everybody's aware that that fifty acre is sold, right?
No, this is, yeah, this is a totally different area.
So you're talking over here by the, the, right, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. I see. Okay, I, I thought you were talking.
Yeah, we're not aware of that.
No, and we, we saw.
It's sold. It is, the, the, Rob, did you check that?
Where you, you know, where.
The trail.
Lovers Lane was.
Oh, no, that's not.
Lovers Lane, no.
I see. That's town property.
We broke the bench out there as well, put it on the floor.
Sorry about that.
That bench was actually a donation to the Bloom on that trail. It was a donation.
It was a donation for sure, I just don't recall.
And so, and so it was. Yes.
Patricia.
Yes, donation.
We can move it wherever we would like it, we just put it on the below our roof plate. If you have a, if you inspire you want us to do it, we're willing to do it.
So, so, you know, I don't want to, you know, speak out of turn here. I know when I was on council, there was one, that specific resident caused, or sorry, maybe lots of accusations.
It wasn't just that resident?
Yeah, my first, yes. I know, I think it's fair to say that they were exaggerated comments. I really felt that at the time. I did attend as a resident, I did attend that area quite often to walk with my dogs. And I did find it never, that I have had ever seen, to be in an environment where it was causing any grief for anyone other than that one resident that was obviously unhappy because, yes, it did disturb her dogs, but the challenge, I think, that we have in our community is we have lost a significant portion of our trails. And I do agree as going forward, what is the future for it for trails? And I just thought it was such an easy, an easy area because it was such a level area, a very user-friendly mobility, there are no mobility challenges whatsoever in that area and it was just a light walk. And so I, you know, I was disappointed to see it dismantled. I was also disappointed that we weren't communicating to ODA only because we did have a financial investment. And I don't think that financial investment was more than five years old. So, and it's hard to find suitable areas in town where a trail might go. So, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what to do. I, I am a little bit sad about it being closed, but there's no doubt in my mind because we were, that was the last trail that I think we had put in prior to all those others kind of being worked on. So there was a lot of sweat equity that went into that. I know I put endless hours into that brushing it. And the financial contribution was, you know, it's sixteen hundred dollars is a big amount of money for eight volunteers. And we are happy to give that because we want the community to be, you know, to shine as best we can. And so we lost that opportunity. So I don't know how we, what can we do to, I don't know where there's another spot to quite like that because it did have a uniqueness about it. A, it had a wonky name, which I know you didn't like. I'm not saying I liked it either, but that name has history. That alley had history. I remember as a young lad.
I didn't want to go there.
I remember as a young lad ripping through that.
I was young once too, Barry.
Ripping through that and man, there was, it was fun just to go through them and I'll leave it up to that too. But it had some character and so it meant a lot to our group and.
It was a well-used trail and a person could take their baby stroller and go down that trail. And there was comments about like, how come we can't get down there anymore?
There was no deviations, there was nothing. I just thought it could have, when we were, you know, when we were talking about the stuff at the other end and I somewhat can understand that, not entirely.
So really that hole there is a road allowance, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's, yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to come across as, I don't even know what the words are to use, but I know, I just kind of want, I guess Donna's giving us clarification, but I'm a hundred percent certain in prior council meetings, we discussed community groups and there are things that they have put in our community and that we would not touch them without notifying the group first. And this group was not notified.
And I guess that's where, that's where it is for us, right? But we don't want to, we don't want to argue, we don't want to fight. Like I know we disagreed on the curios.
I'm sure she'll take that as correction.
Yeah, I think, I think we're getting past that, right? And I think we want to do better, I think both, we both do. We're a little more sad by this, right? I, that's why we're all here.
Doris?
You didn't answer Barry's first question, which was, was this a motion of council?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, secondly, does administration or anybody in public works or whoever it is have the right to just take stuff that belongs to somebody else and give it to another group? Like why is that at the Mr. Bean's if it belongs to the Lions? Why is the bench somewhere else? I'm just wondering where this all comes from. Like do, does council and administration not know where this stops, who it belongs to and why it was put there? I mean, it's for the public to use, but why is it going somewhere else without anybody knowing that owns it? Is what I was wondering.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously we've had a little bit of a communication there, so we'll look into that and we can address it and also upon it, Donna can, can get back to you guys on that.
Yeah, like we're no hurry, like we're, we're just doing our thing, right? So, but we did notice it and I did want it to be.
And it's interesting that it's at Mr. Bean's because I always thought the times I go there, it's too sad, there's no table there. Especially when the guy that's there.
it's too sad there's no table there. Especially when the guy that's there, he's made of it. But now there's one. I noticed that was one. So that's quite funny, actually.
Very badly damaged, so he said he'd repurpose it.
Your, your, your concerns are valid and we'll, we'll, we'll address them. We'll look into it and we'll get back to you guys.
Yeah, and if you need, uh, any more clarity on, you know, kind of that whole project, I'm sure I could find something back on my paperwork somewhere, uh, if you, if you require that, but, um...
We do feel that that should be a, a trail.
We still would like it to be a trail. And I'm, I'm not going to.
So were most people going down the back alley or were they going down the street and then going down that? Like, the back alley behind?
No, that's a road. I know people.
Yeah, they would go on the street.
I, I know, because I know we had a lot of complaints from, from people going, you know. Of course, it's not their land. It's, it's the back alley, right? You know, a lot of people walking through there and people were, some of the, some of the residents weren't very happy with that, for sure.
People were using actual trails.
Well, it's always, it's always the same mentality. It's not in my backyard.
Well, exactly.
Because only my house does it.
I know. Well, there is a, a few.
The gates were being cut all the time.
I'm pretty sure I know which ones were.
Well, I'm sure you have.
Because I, I did run into some challenges a point ago.
And there might be things that have to be done, different.
Yeah, this year's, this year's fortunate, I mean, other years, that's been so wet back there. I mean, there was water pumped out of there. Some of those yards were flooded, but this year it's not like that.
What's the alternative? What's the alternative? Shut it down. What was the alternative cost to the, to the individuals in the community?
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly address it and look into it.
Yeah, um, we'll talk to our turn on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I think there was problems probably in that area, but I don't think it was just strictly that area. I know that I live on that street where those, there were yappies that were throwing up and down that fucking street. And he thought it was a bloody four oh one. And the cops were up and down that street constantly too. And thank God, they're finally gone. I don't know where he went, but he's not there no more. And the cops aren't coming every day. So I'm sure there was probably problems in that area.
Yeah.
I think they're gone.
You know, and, and, you know, just one, one last thing, like, like, the co, the costs are, the costs are small maybe to council, but they're big costs, right? So, like, I, I, if memory serves, I, I believe we brushed up the time for those sixteen hundred dollars. The sign was five hundred dollars. The sidewalk blocks that the bench went on was, I think, I don't know, forty dollars each, whatever they were. And so they're real cost adds, right? So, so I'm just gonna put it out there. You may not like this. If you wanna close that, are you going to compensate us?
Didn't you, didn't you get some money from the town for that?
The town did.
By we made?
Yeah, the town did contribute as well, yes. A thousand dollars at the time. So, but, you know, it's not so much the money for us, but it is. So, because it's gonna take, uh, a cost now if, if we find a new location. And where, where would that location be and, and so on and so forth, right?
And where did the signs go?
We got them.
And where did, yeah, where did the signs?
We got them all. We haven't destroyed anything. We've recovered everything. If you have a different placement for a trail that you want us to look at, that's not a problem, Barry. Um, you all did so much work. And, and part of the other issue too with that trail, and I can't give out too many details, but there was a lot of dirt traffic going on down there. Uh, because they'd come in from the other side. And, uh, we had to, we had to look at that as well. So it's not nice to hear. I didn't like that either. And I meant to do, again, with no, with no malice, we saved everything for you. Um, we haven't destroyed it, um, knowingly. So, uh, if you've got a different proposal for a trail somewhere, um, run it past us. If, uh...
Yeah, I, I got a great idea, I'll be honest with you, is that I think we should go for a trail, to be honest, down the CPR. Down there in the track.
I swear to God, it's three years ago. What's that crazy sound?
I thought they did now.
They're not using it, you know? I mean, it's, it's really hard to deal with the CPR to even get a hold of them. But, you know, they, they don't park cars there anymore. There used to be kind of a spur there, but I mean, the tracks are still there, but...
I, I know, um, a few years back, uh, one of our members had come before, oh, actually, I think it was when I was on council. She had come before council and asked if we could just cut and move, uh, a six or eight foot path along the tracks. And we did, and it went right over to the next intersection and it was kind of right along the railroad use.
Hey, it's, it's, you can almost, almost go to Kalamazoo.
And we're like, this is kind of the unofficial, it's just an unofficial path. For people to get some walking in, right? So.
It's really, really hard to do with the rail. The people even get a hold of them.
I know, I know.
We, we, we tried in the town. They wouldn't even reply to us, you know? We had some, some issues in here and they, uh, we never did get a hold of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it was just.
And why can't we put walking paths where people can see people walking? So if somebody is out walking and they have a heart attack and they're in a bush and they can't help themselves, who's gonna help them? They're there. Why? Because we have walking paths where people cannot tell. Kalamazoo's not a town in a bush. I was just in Walthamon on, on Sunday. They've got beautiful walking paths now. How did they get them? When they, they went back for Hamlet? Who gave, who's given them the money?
The county.
So why can't we get money to get nice walking paths? There's no reason why we can't have a walking path from ranchland all the way up to my house area. That's all wide open. They could see that area. Gerald, in my speed, when I build my house, there's twenty-five feet of easement for the town. There must be on that land as well.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to check that out, but I mean, you don't, you can take place.
When you're talking about the railroad and wooden paths, especially when you're going on a rep, you're...
We, we, we phoned them. We sent letters. We never got replies. I'm, I'm, I'm not kidding. They're very hard to get anything out of.
They have a, they have a seventy-five, you were saying a seventy-five foot right of way, um, that we can't touch. And, uh, we're lucky to kind of use some of that right of way for car show and so forth. And, and it's well cleaned up. Um, but we can't come near those tracks. When, when the decommissioned the signals, like, the vice president, they decommissioned the signals. I phoned him right away. I just said, oh, I'll send a message. He called me back within fifteen minutes, which is unusual. That was a, that was a one-hit wonder. And he said, are the tracks decommissioned? I said, absolutely not. We will not discuss this. We will not discuss this. We're not, uh, building tracks. And I said, I don't understand why they decommissioned the signals then. Because that's what we do.
Yeah, and a twenty years.
And then we had extra time to get them to come and take that building down when the kids were burning it.
Irene, you have something to say?
Yes, we're feeling back to donated items. And going back perhaps seven years, there was a bylaw passed by the previous council stating that any donated item given to an organization, a group or whatever, when they no longer needed it, it had to go back to the person that donated it or they would notify that they no longer needed it. And, um, the person that donated it could take it back and donate it to somebody else. There's, there's a lot of items that have gone missing, um, that caused this.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, now, if phones and tables have been removed from, um, the walkway that had been donated, why were they not given it back or asked if they wanted it back? Why was it taken away?
I, I, you know, not to say that I don't, but, so here, Donna, you got something to say about it?
Yeah, we have a policy now for the donation and, and everything that was on that trail is, is communities in Bloom. So it's, it's there. We just, we just put things out so they'd be safe. And I think, uh, we did need a garbage can at the end there by the, by, and we still have five, four more in the... So you don't need to chat, Barry, where you folks want them, because we gotta get them out of there. Not that that's a bad thing, but let's get them out so that you can use them. So come let me know. But the bench is, is there on, on, uh, on the boulevard where it's safe. Uh, communities in Bloom can give it any time and, uh, and do something with it. Uh, the garbage can will leave, um, because they have to be held around by a skid steer. And the Bean, uh, Kippe is gonna fix that table. And if, uh, if, uh, Barry, you're talking to the, the owner and, and I know it's a Lions table, but if what the table was, it's fixed, it's coming out of there.
Yeah, no, the Lions were very generous with the leaning on them.
And they're, they're, they're pretty good with it there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure the Lions would have no problem with it being moved.
No, I thought you were just talking to them, saying no.
I think that's a recycle business. It came, yeah, it wasn't actually.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. What we might, what we might change it and put the duals there. And then if you want to decide where you want that recycled, it's fine. So we haven't, we haven't done away with it yet. It's there.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, Kevin?
We gotta kinda rock the boat here a little bit, uh, take it for what it's worth. There's a big stink over, uh, the weeds, the grass pot pit. Okay? In this community, there is a big stink about it. That was on the railroad's property. Okay? Now, we're talking about communities in Bloom. And I don't know all the details and stuff about the walking paths dispatch from what I've heard from people talking. But as a taxpayer and as a person that attends almost every meeting here, I have a bit of a concern that you guys as council and mayor did not inform communities in Bloom. And there, I'm not saying a little concerned, like, um, it should've been discussed. I hear a lot of talking, sort of, not beating around the bush, probably bad words, but I'm a straight shooter. That's the way it comes out of my mouth, okay? But they do do something for the community. And there should've been some discussion about this prior to it happening. So I guess my concern is, what about another, they know there's, what about another?
What'll stop this from happening again?
Exactly, my point. Because there's been some talk about another property that's been blocked. And people or trails or some things that have been going on on that property as well.
Yeah.
So who's ever looking after whether that's a volunteer group, they should be notified as well. Like, I'm, I'm just putting it out there. Like, it's, uh, if you, if you sort of see where I'm coming from, like, whether it was an in-house discussion or whatever, it should've still been brought, yeah, we're closing this down.
Right.
At least, uh, at least the volunteers could've had the opportunity to go and say this, that, or whatever. And then you guys could've said, well, we've got Lovers Lane, we got this, or whatever going on down there. That's why we're considering closing this. It just creates more of a transparent between the council and, and, uh, and the community. Okay, back to that.
Well, it encourages, obviously, communication. It encourages community groups to want to work with us or be involved in our community.
Kevin, am I safe to assume that you're talking about the trail property by the Lions Park that was private property that has changed hands and that there's trails on those lands?
Yes, but I'm not, I'm not on, currently on council. I'm not saying that I've got nothing to do with all.
But that's what you're referencing?
I'm just saying this as an example. There's been talk about, uh, the things that are going on in the community that need to be corrected. And I'm just saying, like, communication has to be put there. And, like, I know, I know a few other groups in town, but at the same time, if you don't have that good communication in there, they're gonna specifically go, what the hell do we, why do we need to talk to you about this, right? And you have council, you already, we've had, you guys have had this discussion that I've heard. There has to be some more communication instead of just, okay, well, we may do this, we may not do that type thing, right? That's what makes your community grow is with, with more talking, not on Facebook or gossip or bullshit. No, I'm, I'm putting it out there, you know, like, like I know Donna is, is very good at what she does as far as I'm concerned and what I see. And she's made it quite clear to everybody in this community, her door's open. So I kinda take offense to when people start yipping and yapping and they don't wanna put up or shut up, I guess. No, but that's, that's.
No, I agree a hundred percent. Just like, why don't you run for council if you have so many opinions? But that's my personal thing. I know, I know you are.
It's transparency, yeah.
Openly, you know, Barry, we have stuff on that other trail that's going on.
Now, what could that have been?
We have it, we have it all in the public workshop.
If that trail is closed, is there stuff there that should be communicated to us over what's happening to it? Because we built that trail.
But the rock?
Yeah, and, and, and all of that is on private land, you know, right? Like, Bruce and, and that's the one you're talking about. You're back talking about the other one now or are you still talking about?
No, I'm talking also about the Lions Park.
Yeah, so that, all that land is, you know, there's lots of things that happened over there. First of all, that fifty acres has been purchased by, by, from Uchik. That's been sold. Okay?
From Uchik, yeah.
Yep, that's sold. That's in the town. And then, uh, the Harvey roof portion, he's passed away.
The town owns it?
No, no.
It's been sold?
It's in our, it's in the town, though. Like, we don't own it. And then, of course, the portion that's on Harvey roofs, we all know, he passed away quite some, time ago. And, uh, I, I think I can speak for, for what, what they've told us, that they don't want anybody on that land. I have a letter to that extent. Yeah, so Donna has a letter of that. And then Uchik, there's, you know, prior to them selling that land, there was, there were some issues with, with him and his daughter. Everything was turned over to his daughter. So, I mean, I'm not going down there and that.
I was the neighbor here, so I know.
I know you are. So, so, I mean, they've, they've, they've sold that and, you know, it's...
I just wondered if there's stuff that's gonna happen there with all the stuff.
We, we've been told in both cases that, that the land is not, you know, we're basically trespassing.
Yeah, but if there's stuff there from the trail, it's all.
Uh, I don't know. We, we, uh, I can't answer that question. We pulled it all out, uh, on Friday and today. Uh, most of that was from a grant, correct? That was, that's from a warbird grant. Like, uh, we kept all the signs. Uh, some of the folks we can't pull out, they're just gonna stay on the trail. There's those bird feeders and that, we've left them in the trees. We just pulled out the bigger signs and, and the, the information on this.
It says the trail on the private land.
On the private land. Uh, the public trails are, of course, around the Lions campground. So everything is, everything is stored with us. Uh, but again, some, some of that was, was grants, so, um... But it's all in our, it's all in our full storage of public workshops. So I had no choice. It's public, it's private land. I have no discretion.
But your three would've been notified, that's all.
I have been telling people, I've been telling, I've been putting it out there in the public, public ground. I have put it on Facebook. I have talked about it. I had to pull it because the owners, it's a different, if it is... I will say this, I agree enough to do this. But I will say this, when an owner tells me I've gotta take it off because it's their land, I have to take it off. I have no choice. It is stored for you. So.
No, but you could've got a hold of that lot. Who built the trail and said, this is what I've been notified about? This is what we're gonna do. Okay? That's all enough. So, um...
So would you have gone and ripped it out?
No, we would be notified, we would be notified that, that it's going out.
If it was your community group, you wouldn't wanna be notified?
Yeah. And if we were notified that it's going out, do we rip it out?
But you would still.
That's what I would be asking. Is it up to our community group to rip it out?
Right, but if they didn't notify you, would you have an issue? Would you have an issue with it if you weren't notified?
I wouldn't care if it.
If it wasn't the Lions, if it had to do with the Lions, you wouldn't care?
If it comes to the Lions campground, yeah, I would care about that.
Exactly, because that's what you care about. So they care about their stuff.
But why did they build one private house for you?
They were given the right to do it at that time.
Anyhow, it's done, it's done now. We'll, uh, we'll move forward on that and we will, uh, work with you guys to resolve that.
Yeah. There you go. Oh, we had a drink. Well, thanks, Mayor and Councilmen.
Well, thank you guys for coming in and, uh...
And, uh, I'm sure we'll hear from you guys in the future. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll work on this stuff. But I just wanted to see clarification and, uh, we appreciate the time that you've given to clarify. And, uh, going forward, we'll, uh, we'll see what we can come up with next.
Okay?
Yeah, I will go through. Yeah, for sure. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
No, definitely not. No, definitely not. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that.
Yeah.
It's been too long.
Just a term.
Wiggle, wiggle, wiggle.
Simple.
Quiet.
Yeah.
Be sure it's a wig.
You're gay.
Yeah. You can, you can say no to me. Yeah.
It's like it's been a while.
Yeah, uh, we.
Robert's going. Don't think Barry knows.
Thank you.
Is the meeting over?
End of, uh, end of September. That's, that's, uh.
I think they really knew it was that true, but there was.
Is there two meetings in September?
Yeah.
Anybody heard who's running for the council?
Well, it's on the website, it's on the website, but, um, so far.
There's two mayors and three councillors.
I heard you were right.
I'm not.
So, Gracie, Kevin.
And Carol Lemon.
She put her, is that what?
Yeah, she have put her paperwork in.
Her nomination paperwork in, yeah.
A check's been, yeah.
Yes.
And then Darrell and Carol. Second?
First or second?
Second, I think.
Then Darrell and Carol.
Yeah.